Councilman Contras is present. Councilman Gillian is present. Councilman Renamon is present. Mayor for Tim Young present, and Councilman Crummell is absent.
Thank you. Would y ' all please rise? Pastor Tyler Kelso from Christ Chapel is going to lead us in invocation and our pledge. Pastor Kelso.
Have a seat. Let ' s pray. Father, we thank you for today. And we just thank you for the men and women gathering in this room tonight. God, I just want to pray for them as they come together to lead, to plan, to make decisions. God, would you give them unity, with your good favor, to guide them in your plans and decisions for our country, for our county. God, I just pray for the certain acting that would you watch over them. You are at this meeting tonight. The ring by
Commander.
of the United States of America.
under God, being
this for all. Thank you. You may be seated. invitation from Parker County,
Judge
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, I ' m gonna twenty minutes. And so I want to talk about. And so I want to go through some very brief things. our help and then also to. And so they ' ll go through some of the um. We are going to actually announce the bond. year cycle that we do this and it ' s obviously with the growth that you looked at, obviously we went from number nine in the nation in growth. rate that we ' re growing at very quickly. plus or ruin in this county. It for this is critical. If you driven, I for this bond. And just so you know, for the but but our focus is is to present that are some of the key things and some of the reasons. And so that ' s really the main gist of what also is on the second okay, what that is because and you ' re probably not aware, but at least one person has So the focus of this, which the county has adopted and continue to strive to try to make focus is going to be, we ' re going to have roughly fifty going to go through some of the specifics with some of here in four, that uh up some things I think will park and the lead in doing. Uh, I ' m going to cut it right there just to get to the get to some of the just uh Chris Bosko with Freezing. It goes Um, so I thought even even though wanted y ' all to get a brief overview of the other precincts and then uh and certainly answer that. So precinct one of the things you ' ll see a theme here is extension roadways as well. you see there, one on fifty one, one County ' s taking the lead to improve that with tech stock. The blue are ending existing roadways to complete projects are roadway some widening uh to those lane ad, but get them to a safe stand is precinct two. So in precinct see uh several intersect had heard as as the growth that accidents on uh FM nine another one on uh one ninety nine. funded from the state side. We got is is getting the the engineer So it ' s a little bit off the page there, but a little bit. Uh, there ' s uh two is pretty law enough FM seven thirty to kind of complete uh that network. on east west uh that one that ' s kind of shaded. There uh as the the projects ll get precinct uh three now. precinct three, you ' ll see kind of a carriage roads along I twenty. As you go out to that part of the county, with tech stock and then uh is looking at a grade separated if you driven out there, it ' s been planned on. Uh, and so this I ' ll go into precinct four. Precinct four, like one of the things the precinct four is this experienced that seeing the infrastructure uh this kind of transition from the urban cross section curb and gutter. uh the bank head in a moment, we ' ll zoom it urbanizing that corridor all you guys at five and seven, that ' s a project that is uh and the the partnership is and the subdivisions there and the county ' s partnering as well. So that ' s old. And so that ' s a key partnership. nine is actually extending eleven and you know the northern part ' s been widened that to continue that on a road. So if you go to the next This kind of gives you a depiction of section. So it ' d be an urban that that type of cross section. um from eleven or uh and then you know there ' s the existing and getting that part uh re next slide. Uh work that you guys have been doing around the know, understanding that, you know, there including a partnership with you guys to uh constructed and so bond. Uh, you know, we had was with tech stock on that and and ultimatum, getting that partnership done. and uh and then movement to the existing part of Um, so one of the projects in the it was improving the drainage if you the road. Uh, so we originally had that in the uh under the interchange there. The recent dialogues Commissioner Hells is let ' s do that project more of the things we want to do there at five. added to funding that project. And so the on uh Bankhead. summary of the bond. So these next this although uh may have happened more uh obviously it ' s nice to see a uh new road ext you add to the network. I road is extending to make new connection. ways and then the capacity and you saw the the frontage road those projects. So total of thirty five he ' s considering if you go the next slide down. Uh, so this kind of reside, uh at least touch the those uh and then And of course, one of the key things like Judge have the the tech stock ones is to be able to leverage those what the bond includes on those projects. Uh, so
and and happy to answer any question.
on the election on Monday. Uh target estimate of all these that um balance of the of um partnership are projects we were looking to leverage up it would be twenty five million uh leverage that up with tech stock to get So that kind of gives you a balance of what or the the um the November election, uh nation sessions to try to edge
Yes, sir.
I ' m happy to answer your questions.
Let me get back to you.
it goes back to the east there, right?
uh project for the record.
And five oh nine is that? That ' s that ' s what I was talking
want to take this, but it it actually goes. seven there at the hard turn by the old Mackinac. the there there may there ' s a going from the From the roundabout, yeah, the couplet. which is actually a different project.
Uh, from the couplet, yeah. and it is now funded. Uh, are from the downtown of Alito. uh so that that part is already funded. uh and then this project picks up some develop part of the county and uh north, a four lane divided section. that ' s what we ' re looking at on that section.
Is that all county I am looking at sets east of four zero one. Is that right?
four oh one. Uh, so from Ran to an urban section the concrete, urban gutter section. I was mentioning, one of the things that ' s kind of unique very urban, you know, we ' re still doing rural sections.
Okay, four oh two is broken out from four oh
the existing part uh improve to an improvement in that section.
Okay. The west of the is that future improvements. Okay. So that ' s the
accurate.
Right.
which I think is if if that ' s head are probably it ' s it ' s almost moot ability south of I twenty
um east west and and it ' ll probably
Okay. Well, when I bought my business in Alito, it
me too.
important. Thank you, guys. Any questions?
very much. Thank you. Yeah, I ' m I ' m here. I call me anytime. I ' m here to help.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, I do want to say
I
think both of you guys and and Judge We ' ve been talking with the county since whenever they had the the health is and um
Thank you. Thank you. Council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion, please?
Like a motion we Second.
your discussion. Thank you. opposed ad valorem tax rate for their period beginning October twenty twenty
Yes, this is the budget for this year. Uh,
we come out of tonight is a reduction of is a reduction of oh nine cents from the previous two percent decrease. And it is significantly tax rate. This is a in our revenue E S D um uh And so um we cut a little bit lower, but we feel good on this tax rate is effect um and what they have proposed at least. They have not voted on it. be the same, but we uh police department, a fire uh funding a parks system, street and road improvements, uh some surplus funds in case where revenues don ' t hit. Uh, it also pays off some debt early.
Thank you, Brian. Do we
those maintenance and operations zero point two seven two one eight eight four a total tax rate of five nine seven and be taken per state statute.
Thank you. Do we three seconds. Any other questions? All in five
need a roll call vote.
need a roll call vote. herbal Sean Gillis. Yes. Body votes yes. Motion passed. or enact on setting the date, time, and place, and twenty twenty three through September
Yes, this is going to be a public hearing. Uh, we ' ll there ' s staff is recommending that we take August the twenty second, twenty twenty Council here to hold that uh may not be here uh or will be here. So uh plans that you know of right now on the twenty um if uh I don ' t joining the great state of Tennessee.
Yes, this is going to be a public hearing. There ' s staff is recommending that we take August the twenty second, twenty twenty council here to hold that uh may not be here uh will be here so uh plans that you know of right now on the twenty um if I don ' t join the great state of Tennessee. I
I ' ll be here on the twenty first.
Park hold a public hearing on the tax rate for fiscal year beginning on October one, twenty being on September thirty, twenty twenty second, twenty twenty two zero El Chico Trail hearing on the budget through twenty four, one, twenty twenty three and twenty four on August three at six Park City Hall, Locico Trail, an author
The first paragraph. That was August twenty
I said both twenty twenty three.
Apologize. Not a problem. We have a mo for discussion. Thank you. redirecting the American Rescue ending administered by the U. S. Sewer line along Bankhead High project built. Go
y ' all and you gave direction on a bankhead sewer at that time a little over seven hundred thousand dollar project. Since that time, One is we had a skater system for the lift station on thousand dollars. So it got reduced down to as of water ' s remains in the ARPA funds. And what we ' re asking and other things have occurred. We ' re asking you to redirect the ' s the effluent line and they ' ll be better used there. Since we know what those bids are gonna be on the wastewater situation and so worry. line.
motion please.
that the council approved the American Rescue Plan to now be used for project.
have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor. It ' s an extraterritorial jurisdiction with Alito to release and transfer a thirty one point two four acre park E T J.
It is owned, uh, thirty- one point two four seven acres. For the Caney Revocable Trust. Agreed to release from their extraterritorial lands and boundary agreement that you have. The staff recommends that the ordinance be passed. territorial jurisdiction boundaries in the E T J of the city of Willa as soon as possible. And Mr.
Do we
out of executive session at six forty five p m. Uh mayor ' s comments. I ' d like to thank the council, their service and everything they helped the city with. And a special happy birthday to Honorable Eric Contreras.
He ' s finally old enough to vote, I know.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday, Eric. Mr. Grimes or any council comments?
Um, I have some requests for agenda items. Um, if at the next meeting we could have an update on the wastewater treatment plant bids and how we ' re going to rebid since we rejected all bids, what staff recommends we do, um, and what that timing will be, given that we ' d like to get that started as soon as possible. Get that update and I ' d also like to see if staff could present um some information. It ' s been about a year since we had our expert on our noise ordinance and I would like to see if staff and Chief Franklin with the enforcement of the ordinance have recommendations for what we might want to tweak to make it more effective. Um, if we could just kind of get staff together to discuss that and all volunteer Councilman Cramell who ' s not here, since he was on the committee before, but just kind of a report of where we stand after a year with that ordinance. We didn ' t make any changes to that. So whether we need to tweak it for future events and additional facilities that will be coming in with the district and some other restaurants. So those are my requests.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, one I just wanted I saw on Facebook that one of our reserves retired police reserves had retired after retired after twenty three years of service to the city, Russell Sanchez. I think that ' s pretty amazing. I know he was full time. I used to work with him years ago, but great guy, hate to see him go, but twenty three years of service to the city is fantastic. He worked under six different chiefs and that ' s pretty big accomplishment. So, thank you for his service.
Thank you. Thank you.
So on the roads, I see that Ranch House on one way is complete it looks like or partially complete to move the traffic the other way. So good news. So if we could have an update on when they plan on completing all the concrete construction projects, that would be great.
So we will have department head reports next week, and we will have hopefully some of that stuff will be completed by the time we meet in two weeks.
Okay. All right. Mr. Grimes. Thank you.
Oh, you gonna say something?
Well, you kind of stole my thunder with Eric ' s birthday. Um, so we will have department head reports in the next two weeks. Looking forward to that. I want to thank Candy for her help in preparing this budget and and the tax rate and and her work. We started on this budget back in April and she sat in every budget meeting that we ' ve ever had with a department head. She was she was a rock and and she knows this budget inside and out. She ' s a great asset to this community and to this city. I want to thank you for for what you ' ve done. Um, I want to say this. The tax rate was a very contentious thing about a year ago. And and I want to thank this council for doing what you did because it ' s the easy thing would have been kept the tax rate high and um you guys by your actions tonight and and your actions on the twenty second. I don ' t know if this is the largest tax cut in Texas, but it ' s going to be significant. Um my city manager friends are in awe and shocked and despaired in some cases that you drop the tax rate twenty six percent and change. And that ' s to be committed to you guys. Um there was never a question that staff wasn ' t going to do it because counsel ordered us to do it. And this is because of y ' all. And I want to thank y ' all for that. Um city man I got a city manager study group in a couple of weeks. Um, the other thing is I do want to praise Rose. Uh she just completed her certified public communicator course at that school in Fort Worth. Um,
Texas Christian University.
There we go.
um that uh
Shouldn ' t be that hard to say.
That school in Fort Worth and, want to congratulate her. Um, her her degree there will help us, and it ' s already provided help us with some assets and communications and whatnot. And so, congratulations to Rose.
Okay.
And if I may, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Eric. Happy birthday to you.
Hey, can ' t light it. Can ' t light it.
We need a lighter. We need a lighter.
Motion adjourned.
I ' ll make the motion. We jerk it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.